Good evening, everyone. We have our faithful Mr. Almer with us. Welcome to our Wednesday, August 16th workshop business meeting. We have the deputy mayor's meeting this weekend this evening. So it's four of us. Let me roll. So first is the opportunity to request to vote to add or modify agenda items. Any requests? Talk about it, we'll get down there. So we'll leave the part where it is announcements. So the additional funding that was announced last week for individual property owners through dishes, the Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Services. The press announcements and the initial links that were provided left the impression that there would be an electronic portal provided. That is not the case. The funds are being provided to not-for-profits at county levels, which will accept applications and then presumably there will be grant agreements with the state to distribute out from there. That process has not been clearly communicated to the public. And the not-for-profit, excuse me, that was identified for Putnam was really not prepared for the onslaught of requests they would get. So that is being sorted out. I spoke with someone in Congress member Lawler's office today, and they are attempting to assist with smoothing it out a bit. But folks, if you haven't had your phone calls returned, you are not alone. Okay, continuation of public hearing.
Tomorrow's yard.
Oh, yeah. Tomorrow's what? Yard waste?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Tomorrow's yard waste. Thank you. Thank you for reminding me, because I have stuff to put up to. Continuation of the public hearing amending chapter 131, water. Thought I'd go through the edits that were made since last week, as we've done before, since some of them just caught up on. So the table contents reflect reordering that was done based on board comment and public comment last week. All of the definitions are now in one location, and there are enforcement sections added. Do you have the red line there, Jeff? Okay, on the third page, 13003, you'll see where the definitions were moved from article 3 up into the definition section. On 13004, under definition of units, residential unit has been modified to dwelling to correspond to zoning code. Throughout, Board of Trustees has been shifted to Water Commissioners for consistency. On page 13010, we discussed last week making permanent that all restaurants shall only provide drinking water upon request. I had a look at the zoning code and definitions that could, to which that restriction could be applicable. And they are bars, bed and breakfasts, coffee shops, hotels, and restaurants, which is what I put in the text, which I think Jeff will see there. Jeff reviewed it and made another suggestion, which is that there is lack of, there may be lack of clarity, making it seem as if bed and breakfasts and hotels can't provide water for people's rooms or in people's rooms. And what was intended here is restaurants in the hotels and beds and breakfasts. So I wonder if it's sufficient to say restaurants and then parenthetically including those within beds and breakfasts and hotels.
Is it necessary? If it's a restaurant, it's a restaurant, no matter what it's inside. What else? The hotels and bed and breakfast?
If the board thinks that's sufficient, I'm okay with that. But I agree with Jeff that it does seem confusing on that level. Thoughts? Keep it simple. Laura? Some of our, so for example, we do have, there is this distinction. Pig Hill Inn has a restaurant that is not open to the public. It's just guests. Hudson House has a restaurant that is open to guests and the public. So there are different kinds of uses, and I think that's where my brain went, and including them. You put there water for cooking. But again, we don't need water in the room.
Will they provide drinking water?
There's never been, I mean, there's glasses in a hotel room. And if people want it, they pour their tap, doesn't sit there waiting to drink it. Not like putting water on a table in a restaurant.
Yeah, and bed and breakfast tend to have sort of a buffet, such situation where they have like a pitcher of cups, a platter of spoons or whatever.
They do full breakfast there.
Okay.
And they have a waitstaff.
Okay. Well, then maybe, but then.
And I don't know, I don't think that, I don't think that whatever silver spoon is called now does meals for guests, do they, Jeff?
Don't know. I mean, he does, he serves something, yeah.
I would need it though, keep the bed and breakfast in restaurants. Because if it's just providing drinking water at the bottom, then that covers it, right?
So we then shift it to parenthetical?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you want to go through all of your proposals and then discuss, or do you want to discuss this? I'm not going to go as you go, as you go along, and if there's something you want to pause at that I haven't talked about. Shout out?
Yeah. I guess with this one, I wonder if, I don't want it to become like plastic straw issue, right? Where like you focus on one thing, but that's not like, that's not the problem. Like, so I guess I'm curious, the long time restaurateur, is drinking water like the big use of? If you were going to address water usage at a restaurant, is it drinking water?
It's everything. I mean, it's, it goes in coffee, it goes in tea, it goes just, you know, in a scotch of water. You've got, the only way that you can thaw something, shrimp, for example, shrimp, you have to have continuous running water to know that anything thawed and sitting there.
By health code.
By health code. So you have that. Then you have just the rinsing of plate, to have the dishwasher's bell running.
But absolutely unnecessary, like how much drinking water gets poured out that isn't even set.
Right.
That's like an option.
The place to save it is at the drinking water level. Because, as I said to you last week, I was watering the plants with it outside. And I have water bottles, so we go to the table and we say, would you like, you know, house bottle tap, green O'Connell? We don't say anything, but at the end of the day, the most amount of water that is consumed actually is, I would say, hikers. You know, they come in and they're thirsty. But apart from that, most people will take a sip and leave it. They'll take three sips and leave it. There's a water drinker, and then there are those other people, and they never touch the water. So if you go to a table and you pour everybody water, it's a waste.
Yeah.
So.
I see this as like one of the easy spots where we can.
This is an easy spot to save water, water on tables, absolutely. Because, you know, I'm just dumping it in the drink.
Yeah.
God knows the garden doesn't need it.
Not this week.
I would change it to establishment serving food.
That's a good shortcut, all established.
I was trying to make it parallel with the zoning code. Laura, what's your, do you have a continued concern about the, first about the concept?
I appreciate your support for it. I guess it would be helpful to know, to hear from other restaurants about it.
I'm sorry to cut in, but aside from that, we're throwing it away and then we're paying for it.
Yeah, right.
So I can't imagine anybody, then you have to have a buster who serves it.
Yeah.
And people who expect them.
There's a whole ritual to it in restaurants.
And resources of water.
I felt perfectly comfortable in establishing and upon request requirement. It's just, for me, it's matter of giving the language, right?
Yeah, it's not like we're not giving it. We're giving it to the people who will actually consume it, and we're conserving it for their uses.
So any consensus around, my feeling is that we should be consistent with the zoning code. And that addressing B and B and hotels is restaurants within B and Bs and hotels resolves the issue that Jeff raised earlier. Thoughts?
Yeah, I think that's, that seems like a fine solution. You can kill the burden in any direction you wish, but I think that works.
On page one, thank you, page 13011, taking out dates. Trying very hard to give the ordinances the longest lifespan possible. So we've taken out dates related to repairs and replaces of cellular endpoints. 13014 on the next page is the inclusion of enforcement identifying the water superintendent, the code enforcement officer, and the Full Spring Police Department, or other officials designated by the Board of Water Commissioners. Numbering changes for a bit, coming under rents, water rents on page 13014, the typical special assessments is the number of units that are assigned to, for billing, using billing. Right now, restaurants and bars have unit designations. My brain began turning when the provision of glasses and water was on the table. I went back and looked at this. Bars, I missed at the top, and I included it under bars and coffee shops, special assessment. Seems like an easier thing to do to, again, be in line with zoning is have restaurants, bars, coffee shops on one line. I just don't know from a use perspective if four commercial units is appropriate for a light food service.
I feel like coffee shops never offer water to anybody, so I wouldn't put them in the same.
Yeah.
Can you, I'm sorry, can you explain what's an assessment?
Go ahead, Jeff. So like, for example, part of a site plan approval.
Yeah, it's to determine how many lap rates should be charged.
Oh, I see.
So for a coffee shop where you have a lot of traffic, maybe a lot of usage in the bathroom, you make coffee.
Yeah, lots of dishes.
Then you have to look at how the special assessment, that we really never defined, the village never defined what the assessment should be on that, because they have a restaurant.
It leaves you, by saying special assessment, it leaves flexibility to do a case by case during an approval.
Yeah.
And also beds and breakfasts and hotels were not identified at all. There was, there's another category, but I think if we identify them in the zoning code, it makes sense to draw them out here.
Bars is twice.
Yeah, I didn't, I realized that after we printed it. So I would say leave restaurants and bars where it was, at four commercial units. And then coffee shop, do we have it up? Yep, coffee shop, Red and Green Hair Salon.
Bar service, much water as restroom?
It's about like how much they're using for like. And then.
But like barber shop, like.
So that's very, that's very identical.
Small one.
Yeah. So that's got a mix, right? And that would be, it has to be assessed under a site plan review, as it was when it opened.
Or would that be combined food service, retail shop?
It might, I don't know how the planning board assessed it. I imagine they looked at it and combined barber and brew, combined food service and retail. There's, I think there's enough flexibility, though, with other and combined food service, retail, to give possibilities for.
Okay.
That's, all right, Claire?
Is this opening, short-term rentals? Are we?
Those are their bedrooms that already exist in the properties.
Yeah.
And I think with bed and breakfasts and hotels, they're regulated differently by New York State. So it's a category that makes sense that way. I don't see how we. I think because we've been consistent within, we'll soon come before S S D R, right? We'll have the discussion there. I think we should be consistent in the way we refer to them in this chapter and the other chapter.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
Okay. 13017, page 13017, making gender neutral. 13019, the language provided for the notice of water termination was signed very truly yours, the Board of Trustees. Hardly seems agreed for something, telling someone they're cutting off their service. So just to bring it up to date, I changed, thank you. Does anybody have any objection to that? 130.
You're welcome. How about that?
More appropriate.
I'm open to any of those, anything that's not very truly yours. Anyone have a preference?
How about kind regards or regard, best regards?
I think it should be more professional.
Yeah.
I think it's, I think it's.
13021, the second reference to imprisonment has been removed. It was missed the first round. 13022, so a member of the public raised the question last week about what happens when the dam gets repaired? And dam repair will be, it will be a large project. And then we hope that when regular maintenance is in place, we don't have these, we don't have the same large crisis projects that we have now. So I think we don't want to memorialize dam repair in the code, again, giving flexibility. But we want to be mindful that when the village does have, for whatever reason, to draw on the water supply from the D E P, we have to buy the water. And for that reason, we want to encourage folks to conserve in those times too. So my proposal for addressing that is under 13019, including under the legislative findings, item C, when the village must draw upon backup water supplies, water may not, may need to be purchased, and such purchase may be costly for users. And that's, that's kind of covers the range of. Okay. Feedback reflected for returning reasonably necessary in commercial industrial use. That was not deleted on purpose. Thank you for the catch. The 806040 is reflected in this version. Page 13023, there was the note in public comment related to private wells and rain barrels. The language I propose to address them talks about conservation. In times of water emergency, conservation of water in private wells, rain barrels, and similar is encouraged, rather than maybe used.
Yeah.
Consistency under item E, lawn, ornamental shrub, plant, tree, or garden. Item two, here's where we refer to short-term rentals, hotels, bed and breakfast, short-term rentals, washing linens upon request. Again, shrubs, lawn, tree, garden.
That might be one to check with the Health Department on.
Why do you see that?
Washing linens upon request.
It's done, it's done all over the place. It's the, like, the little note that you see in every hotel saying.
Yeah, in between, like, if you stay in three days, you don't get a whole bunch of new towels every day. If it's the same person.
I'm reading, I just can't watch the sheets or somewhere.
You can, you wash them on request, which, and I mean, every state I've been in in the last decade has.
I, I think it's the language that is.
Okay, so what would work better so that it's clearer?
Whenever you're on request, I'm thinking, okay, someone stayed there Tuesday through Thursday. You have new people coming in Saturday, the sheets have to wash.
I wonder how you're reading it. Oh, 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 okay, all right.
That's what's it.
Yeah, it's towels that we're trying to address.
For each guest.
During the guest stay?
Yeah.
On if it's per guest or during each guest stay?
Upon request or change of guests.
There we go. You guys, what pages about?
3023. Guest turnover?
Guest turnover. Well caught. Didn't think of it. I need multiple brains looking at the same thing. Okay, 13024, consistency adding in approval of Board of Water Commissioners. And then here again is the enforcement being extended for the emergency orders to the water superintendent, code enforcement officer, and police department. 13025, you see the definitions moving up. And then 13027, grammatical corrections and gender neutrality. Eliza had asked a question related to fines and fees, and I just want to clarify that it has been addressed, just remember where it is. With what?
We decide.
Where does it say we decide?
13028, top of the page indeed. A much greener house spraying irrigation systems, beauty, we decide, other side, comma, exterminators.
I've never in my life heard the word we decide. Let's check merit. Chemicals that kill weeds are known as weedicides. Selective weedicides kill certain targets while leaving the desired crop relatively unharmed. Weedicides are chemicals that are sprayed over fields to get rid of weeds. So it's as opposed to killing everything that's living on the ground and such similar things. So I think we should leave that. I'm not putting my eyes on it right now. Remember where that was? It was, it was the question related to. Sorry. Yep, but I'm blank on that. Endpoint, endpoint, it's related to endpoint. Here we go. Okay, it's page 130, 13012, under section 13015, penalties for offenses. Item A gives the flexibility up to 1050. I saw it earlier today. There's a quarterly. Someone was struggling to find it. There is a reference to.
Or in quarter during the war, it's in sea.
Okay, so read it out.
The whole thing, it's.
No, or D. On that's the page, 13, at the top.
Termination of water service?
No. No, you're looking for something that says furthermore.
Oh, here we go. Furthermore, the water rate for any quarter during which the water meter is out of service during tampering with.
In 134, 130-15C, we added, if any destruction manipulation, its connection abuse, prevention of replacement.
There we go.
Is what we added, or other interference with the water meter revoked, cellular endpoint.
There is.
Without a wiring shall be considered violation under the penal law and subject the offending party to the above penalty.
Yes, and their quarterly manual meter reads, these may be applied. Okay, so that covers, that covers the question that you had about how is this relate to the conversation that we'd had earlier about water meters? Okay, so that's, that's everything that was submitted by the public last week and reflects all of the changes that the board discussed last week. I believe Jeff has one. Mr. Almer, would you like to make, would you like to read your comment into the record yourself?
I'd really prefer that the esteemed village clerk go ahead and read it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, please add my comments below to the public comment under Article Two, Emergencies. The proposed changes to the existing code are excellent, providing specific conservation guidance for each stage of water emergencies. During emergencies, the onus for conservation lies with village residents, which makes sense as residents use the preponderance of the village's water supply. However, with the burgeoning impacts of today's climate change, I encourage the village to take an even more progressive approach to water conservation. Last year during the water emergency, the village continued to host Sea Streak as well as hold a community day celebration. While both of these endeavors contribute to the village's well-being and revenue, each added an additional burden on the already severely depleted water supply. In an email to the mayor on June 27th, I encouraged the board to language the Sea Streak contract, which will allow the village to suspend the contract in the event of a village emergency. If, for example, Sea Streak had been scheduled to dock in the aftermath of the July 9 flooding, I have no doubt the village would have suspended its service. A water emergency, which is no less egregious, excuse me, egregious, thank you, should demand the same level of action. I recommend that Article Two include language that provides the village the option to suspend or cancel discretionary events during a stage one or two water emergency, and the requirement to suspend, postpone, or cancel discretionary events during a stage three emergency. Respectfully, Walter Oliver, one Mary, and you call spring.
Thank you very much. So let's talk about it. I did follow up with Matt and Michelle regarding Sea Streak and the potential impact. And the water superintendent's assessment was the toilets are flushing, whether it's Sea Streak or other visitors. The number of visitors is a. He felt that the reduction of the Sea Streak and the number of gallons per flushes that could be generated from Sea Streak isn't necessarily a large help in a water emergency, because we have visitors here anyway, can't control, we can't tell other people to come, not to come. So he felt that was an inconsistent way to approach Sea Streak from a water usage perspective. So they explained that. Well, okay. I actually, I think that Mr. Almer's recommendation regarding events is good. We had a ticketed event at Mayor's Park.
So you're saying that what's inconsistent in singling out Sea Streak, but having an overall policy that allows us to cancel extra events for, yeah.
In a more broad.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I would put Sea Streak in that, like, give us the the tools to be able to do that, to you know, if there's a way to define it, but it's inclusive.
Well, I also wonder, because of the emergencies we've experienced this year, like, if we just had a flash flood that filled the tunnel, would we want to cancel Sea Streak for that weekend? would we want to cancel sea streak for that weekend while we pump out the tunnel? You know, so it might be something that is worthwhile just considering as a policy as like in whole with sea.
And not just related to water.
Right, not just related to water, but emergencies, disasters of any sort. Um, the village reserves a right to cancel, um, dates and refund the sea streak for those states.
Be mindful, we've not yet signed a contract.
No, we don't have.
We can address sea streak specifically within the contract.
Yeah.
But I take the point of having capacity to cancel large scale events in the case of a water emergency. Yeah, it's, I mean, it may, I'm if it's possible to get the data, it'd be interesting to know about water usage at our bathrooms and have a sense of what that looks like on like. Yeah, or like, yeah, through the course of the year and have and like, also for our larger conversations about how tourism impacts the village, that's one, you know, one data point, and maybe we'll get, you know, like, we may get to a point where we need to close bathrooms and have porta potties. Or some, like, I I'm I'm, I guess I'm curious about how big the scale of water usage there is versus other things. It's it's the point you raise is legitimate, it should it should be a data driven decision. The question I would have for for the clerk first is, do we have endpoints at the public bathrooms and at Mayor's Park, at the visitor center and at Mayor's Park?
There are definitely a visitor center, because I recall Bunsy saying they put them there.
Is that correct?
I have to check that, I'm not sure if that's we might have on this last round put them in at the visitor center. Mayor's Park, I'm almost positive does not have.
What's mostly used for sporting events, local sporting events, would we cancel those as well? Sorry.
It's not up to us. When it were under the, I mean, under the intermunicipal agreement, Haldane.
Right.
Is responsible for cancelling event, uh, events at Mayor's Park, their their events, but we continue to control rentals of the pavilion. Um, why don't, my suggestion is that there's nothing in this chapter that is urgent, there's nothing dependent on this that is urgent. Um, we're nearly there, but I think that this comment that's raised is valuable and I think the approach that you're suggesting, getting what data we have available to us to make the decision is a good thing. So I would, I would, um, suggest that we, um, we want to keep the public comment period open and bring it back after, so we can discuss it and with public review after we make additional, if we have to, after we have additional data.
We won't have any sea streak that data until after the fall.
No, but again, I think sea streak gets just addressed in its contract. I don't think you'd want to name out something like that in a code, you want the code to be flexible for circumst, for all circumstances, or as many and as many as possible.
Last year for Community Day, there was a drought and we canceled the fireworks.
Yep, that's right. I think at Community Day, it's mostly residents who would be using water anyway, they just happen to be on Main Street, right? Like, I think there's a difference between doing something or you're bringing a bunch of new users to the village versus something where it existing users, like a sports game where it's residents who are coming together, I think there's a difference there. So I wouldn't treat all of them in the same way in terms of water.
Should we do a broad language, something like tourism planned events?
We can't cancel tourism, we can't keep, can't put up barriers and keep people out.
When events.
Events, what we can say.
I'm I'm struggling with it being in water at all, because an emergency of any kind, you know, if we can't get through the tunnel or we're going to start a fire with fireworks, we have to cancel certain events, it's not even about the water.
And and we shouldn't need the code and the code, you don't need the code to.
Code to tell us, we need common sense though, you cannot fireworks, when there's a drought, and and you get to call that without having it in code. So I don't know that the the wording has to be in the water section, you know, there has to be code for emergencies, I suppose, you know, I mean, or there's there's rationale for when emergencies are declared. There's water emergencies, there's fire emergencies.
Yeah.
So.
I'm not, I'm not texting friends, I'm looking at those.
I thought I was, I was looking to see if there's an emergencies, um, chapter.
There's not.
Any emergency that you you or the board would declare would include the sea streak, fireworks, and and any number of, you know, the bonfire for Halden, or how they.
Yeah.
I just don't think it needs to be called out in the water specifically in water.
Yeah, but I I, you know, think Walters. Good, and we should have it in our hands. Contracts or updating even events, even events, um, I mean, we've we've canceled events because there was an emergency flood problem down at the pavilion. We just, you know, contacted the people and said, sorry, we have to cancel.
Yeah, I don't think you need to write in the code to have the ability to cancel an event during extenuating circumstances.
I actually think that the way that it leaves stage three is written, it says that any use beyond. But it's quite something same, um, all waters, some customers that eliminate all non-essential coastal water. So that's, that is, that is really broad. That is everything, you know, we just all have to, everything goes down to simple use. Um, and, you know, as long as we are considered, it's customers, the village itself needs to limit its usage. And shall increase public outreach and messaging. Yeah. If we say all water system users rather than customers, that. Yes. You just want distinction.
Yeah, I think that's good.
Eliza's rule of thumb about not duplicating what you already have in your language. So. So Almer, you have we addressed the concerns that you had in this discussion?
Yeah, I I I think, um, yeah, not all emergencies are alike, and this is specific for water emergencies. And of course, the 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 board has the wherewithal to terminate the events as it sees fit. Uh, but I think, look, if we've got the the water stores down at twenty percent, thirty percent, uh, you know, uh, even though the folks from the sea streak may only be flushing toilets, uh, you know, down there at the end of Main Street, um, they're also consuming water, you know, in different ways, uh, et cetera. I I just think it's, i- i- it should be broad based, but I think it's good to have that arrow in your in your quiver specific to a water, water emergency.
Thank you, thank you for the feedback, so we'll leave the public hearing open, um, in case anyone else joins. Um, okay, Carrie, Carrie, you're here for cheese shop discussion, right, not for water?
I'm here for the cheese shop discussion, yes.
So we'll leave the public comment, um, excuse me, the public hearing open in case anyone joins the meeting going on. Um, any other matters of one thirty that folks wanted to raise?
Great job, updating it.
So I should make a motion to keep it public hearing open until certain day.
Well, we're gonna, we'll leave it open to the, this evening. And when we get to that portion of the agenda where we have the resolution to adopt, we'd decide whether we're going to close it or not. Yeah?
Yeah.
Um, okay, moving on to board business, approval of minutes, I need to abstain, I was absent on July twenty sixth. Someone else like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of July twenty six, twenty twenty three as.
Favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? I think. Okay. Um, the next item is a request by the Phillips Town Behavioral Health Hub to use the bandstand. Um, traditionally, they use the dock as well, um, for an overdose awareness event. Um, when this was submitted on August fourth, the insurance, she was the person applying, Melanie Matero, insurance was pending, the event coordinator reached out separately to say that, um, insurance has been received. So, um, I would make a motion to approve this request for the use of the bandstand and the dock on eight thirty one. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed?
You want to amend that to include waiving of the fees?
Oh. Yeah, good catch, clerk, thank you, yes, I do. I would like to amend my motion to waive the fee, but it's not for profit. Uh, a second modification, all in favor? Thank you. Uh, the planning board has reviewed sixty Main Streets, um, which is the, the building where um, William Lawrence was and where poor George is moving. Um, they have recommended a waiver for one off-street parking space based upon um, the logic that the existing space is not expanding, um, the letter is submitted by Acting Chair Daniels, any discussion? Uh, motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the recommendation for one off-street parking space um, for sixty Main Street.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, any opposed? Our next is, I'm going to turn this to Eliza, as it's a request for for me to assign, an authorization for me to sign.
Um, I make a motion to authorize Mayor to sign the parking meter kiosk agreement with T two systems.
This is to, just for clarity, this is to get the actual.
To get the kiosks on the street installed for our parking plan that is coming soon.
Great, and we'd already talked through the different bits, right?
Yeah, we've already, we already selected this one, we're just making, giving her.
This is definitely from the agreement regarding credit card and credit card usage at the kiosk.
Eliza made a motion, did you second? Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Two thousand and eight parking to me, I think second for me is.
You're still here.
Oh, the irony, okay, um, cheese shop request for outdoor tables, this is a request coming in related to the, um, Chamber of Commerce Music and Wellness Event, we have um, Carrie from the cheese shop with us tonight, hi. You want to tell the trustees about what you're proposing?
Uh, yeah, it's pretty simple, um, the day of the wellness event, we would like to just put a a table out front to serve sandwiches and we'll sell sandwiches and some non-alcoholic beverages for crowd control purposes. Hi, guys.
We weren't looking at you as we were actually looking at you on screen. I I love this idea, these are my concerns, um. So other times that we've had tables like this on the sidewalk, um, it's been times when traffic was, um, either stopped or limited in space so that there was area for people to overflow into the street, or it's been in a setback location, like next to, um, uh, the outfitter, that's not the, that's not the outfitter, um.
Also.
Also, thank you. Um, I'm concerned about narrowing the sidewalk on a September afternoon. Um, I just think it's, we, or the sidewalks are so packed, I don't think it's a good idea, much as I feel like, I feel like a party pooper.
I have a question, um, Carrie, would you guys be having your regular seating tables in addition to this?
Oh, no, it would replace the seating tables, the only thing that would take up probably instead of our three feet allocation, it would go to probably like four to five feet max, just so we could have space behind the table for one of our employees to be behind there.
Yeah, so it, to me, it doesn't seem like it's all that much bigger unless it's the ten by, ten foot by ten foot tent, which I think to the mayor's concern might be too big, but I think putting two tables or one table out there, one table that's six feet by two by five is not all that different than the spaces currently being occupied by cafe tables.
Same place of the cafe, of the cafe tables?
Yeah, and the, I asked, I did put in the proposal for like an awning, more of like a, like a sail that would be above. Um, and then that way, just to like shade my employee from any sort of unnecessary like skin damage from the sun. Um, and, uh, the tent is the o, the other option, because like the sail would have to like be attached to the building uh, and then run to the tree right in front, just like tied for the day. And that's the reason that I also put it in the tent in case you didn't want me to tie anything to the tree or to the building.
What are you thinking about for a, for a, um, an awning?
Um, it's, you like, you know, the sail, uh, you've seen probably CNN restaurants and stuff like that. So probably like eight by eight triangle.
But how how high on the building?
High, um, like a above where the cheese is, so probably like twelve feet off the ground.
Well, the height that an actual awning would be.
Yeah.
So, this is, um, this seems, it does seem like a small request and it's a very, it's a really cool request. What I think we have to bear in mind as a body is is precedent. Um, because if we say yes to the cheese shop, which would be lovely to do, right? What, what do we open ourselves to saying yes or no to and other retail spaces, like with crowded sidewalks, this happens to be a wide spot, wide portion of Main Street, that's not the case. For example, the the coffee, the coffee that was being sold up at, um, the motorcycle shop, that sidewalk is much narrower. Um, these, these are the concerns I have.
I have a question. You have the doorway, right, or do you?
Yes.
Little little alcove there, can you put the table right across the door?
Um, I'd prevent anyone from actually coming into the building, and so I still want to keep business going that day.
Yeah, I don't think you can do both. You know, I mean, if they're going to buy outside, well, let them just buy outside.
But they they wouldn't have access to the, any of the other products that we've had, like, we would only do sandwiches.
I'm sandwich stand for one day.
I know, and I'm just trying to pick outside of the box to get to yes, that's all.
Laura, thoughts? And was this done last year, but it was done during Community Day? Yeah, so there was capacity for people to overflow and then the stores that put out tables, put them on the outside of the sidewalk as opposed to against the building. Um, so like the bookstore had tables out front, but again, you could move it, you could move up the sidewalk and up the street. Our, and our requirement is that tables and things have to be, what, like, three feet?
No more than three feet.
The wall of the building. I wish there was a way for us to approve in areas with wide sidewalks versus narrow. If we don't have that ability, I am concerned about allowing some enough others, like if Hudson Hills, when I put a stand on the sidewalk, it would be disastrous.
Yeah, right, right, and that's, that's what I'm thinking about.
Yeah.
And Carrie, there's no way to fit it within the three feet, to have a narrower table or something that.
Or how about in the parking lot next to your building?
Could you partner with the coffee shop to do it there?
I, yeah, we could talk to the coffee shop.
Or whoever, do they own the? Ming Moon owns it, but maybe Ming Moon would be willing to partner with you for a safer space. I love the concept, I just want to make sure that we have safe passage on the sidewalk.
There are people, cars going in and out.
There are cars going in and out of there, good point. Um.
How about that grassy patch?
That's currently where where the bike.
Rock would be.
Intended to go. Do we own that, Jeff?
We own that.
That's a possibility.
So there's, there's that grassy patch on the other side of the parking lot entrance?
I I was hoping we'd have the bike moved by then. Um.
Probably more, considering how much time we had to do this.
That's true. That's separate. Yeah, I have a, I have a comment about.
Go ahead.
Oh, no, it's about bike crap. I mean, that's, that's a location, if if the board is willing to consider that, it's a location that's under village.
Carrie, is that something you would be open to, doing it just across that driveway instead of in front of your business?
I mean, honestly, I think that fence where that driveway is, is is actually like in line with the front of our building. So I don't know how that's going to change too much, I think the only thing that really changes is that there's like the tree that's in front of it. Gonna change too much. I think the only thing that really changes is that there's like the tree that's in front of it. We could, we could also like move the table to like the side of the tree, but there's that bench there, and I don't know. If anyone wants us to like overtake that bench, and I know that there's like people who want to sit down or.
Oh, no, we weren't talking about on. On the roadside of the sidewalk, we were talking about that, you know, where the parking lot is?
Yeah.
Like a grassy patch with a tree there, right, right in front of that fence that's in front of.
Right next to the coffee shops, um.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we're on the same page.
Yeah, I'm I'm happy to do that.
I'm more comfortable with that than I am coming out further.
From the sidewalk.
From the sidewalk and setting that precedent.
So.
My question about that is is shade.
Uh. Be under a tree in that situation.
Okay. Okay.
So that's Eliza.
My question is, would we be able to apply like? With the precedent concern, if it's not on the sidewalk, it's on the grassy patch. Would that be like, could we still say no to anybody who asks for sidewalk spot?
Could I um, suggest maybe, and this is like for for future, like, would you think that maybe the the village would be opening to like giving permits? Like, everything has to go through you, and then you get like a written permit for like any sidewalk usage. That way, it's not opening up to like a free-for-all with the rest of the tenants?
What were you gonna say, Jeff?
You can handle this on a one-off basis. So the cheese shop Carrie's requested for the cheese shop, and if the board says yes, then just that day. See what I had mentioned earlier is that. But then what happens when Angie's and Paulette's and the coffee shop and the pizza place?
Right, exactly.
And Ming Moon want to do the same thing. How much space have we cut off in? You know, where do you draw the line? And how do you distinguish yes for one and no for us? So that's, you know. A policy or coming up, you know, for the board to address for these type of events probably wouldn't be a bad idea, though that's not gonna solve.
Doesn't solve the problem for this time.
For this time, so. I don't know what the right answer is. I just kind of look at, okay, if you do it here, there's a domino effect.
Yeah.
I guess we have to plan for worst case scenario. From the chamber's response, they only had one shop ask make this request. And it's been coming spreading through Aaron.
Right, but what so so the 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 possibility here is. Another food vendor. Right, sees what this has been approved and says, well, now I'm gonna ask. That's a good idea. I'll ask.
Well, it doesn't have to be a food vendor.
Right.
It could be, it could be any retailer on Main Street could ask for the same thing.
We're talking, we're talking about September. I I hate to be the stick in the mud here, but we're talking about September twenty third. Our sidewalks are leaning, they're jammed. And I just, I just don't, I I personally don't feel that I can, I'm sorry, Carrie, I don't feel that I can vote to support this request. That's that is my feeling. Do others? Have thoughts? Um, it's awful to be, it's awful to be the bad guy.
No, well, yeah, I I think there's the possibility of. The space of the table, but then also the people that are on the other side.
That's right, a line and a line.
Yep, and a. It could be bigger and. I do think that's it. I think that's.
Right, you're gonna people congregating around the around the table.
Yeah, because we need just three of them and a four person behind the fabric.
Yeah, yeah. Yes.
Hmm, I wish it was just a better.
Look, it's life in a village. It's it's a, it's a, we are a small village that expands to a city on the weekends. Um, and it's just our reality, and we have public safety. It has to be where we primarily focus.
Yeah, I think that that's right. Um, there are shops that have lines that go out the door and view all over the.
Yeah.
Sidewalk and then I, you know, we don't really have a policy to address that, but I guess if this is something that would. Yeah, specifically add to the possibility of that, it's probably better not to do it.
So, um. I'm sorry, Carrie, but I I'm going to make a motion to not approve this request. Um, may I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. I'll find something to bring to you guys. Don't you worry.
What did you say? What is that?
I'll bring something else to you later. Don't worry.
Do, because we certainly open. If there are ways we can say yes, we want to say yes.
Yeah, absolutely. Get me your table.
Okay, um, the next item is a re- um, a request related to. You you may have seen folks around the village over the last few months painting with easels. Um, the Walkill. River Center for the Arts sponsoring a a plein air painting program. They're having a festival in October, the week of October ninth to the thirteenth. They would like to use. Um, Cold Spring as a location and are requesting um, permission to have painters in public spaces. The local contact um, is Allison Masardi, who does live in the village. Um, I had a further conversation with her today. And I love this idea, by the way. Um, but I did, I I did ask her um, to. Work with Walkill River Center for the Arts to bring more information, because as the conversation progressed. Um, she said that they would like to do a workshop um, for painters at.
Dockside.
Um, and we need to issue a permit for that. So my motion is to table this, um, but. Look very much forward to a revised request that is inclusive of the whole event. She she mentioned the possibility of. Twenty to fifty cars. Um, and again, that's and it's October, it's a weekday, so we need to, we need to think about those things too.
Yeah.
Um, do I need a second and a and a and a vote to table, Jeff?
No, because the request is really has changed from original email.
Oh, right, and we could direct her to contact uh, perhaps adding the parking.
Yeah, I think there are ways we can help her, help her get to to yes on this one.
And I think we should just make sure that like with the same concern sidewalks are not being used as locations for painters.
And she right now, she's on vacation, so she couldn't come in to talk. It will be easier to sort all through all of these details if she's working with the event coordinator and having conversations. Okay. Cool idea, though.
Yep.
Okay, so. I would ask the board, um, do we feel as if we are? Based on our conversation tonight and the public feedback we've had tonight, our discussion of that feedback. Do we feel that we are ready to um? Um, uh, uh, take up a resolution to approve water with the changes we discussed this evening? Would you like to? Um. Continue the public hearing into our next meeting so we have time to. Let it settle and make the make the revisions, the minor revisions that we discussed?
I'm okay with moving forward with it as there weren't major changes. And um, I think we addressed everything. I agree.
I feel good about it. I think my questions are around outreach and implementation, even that we'll want to. You know, that that's separate from.
Oh, oh, oh.
Just kind of asking them, you know, knowing kind of what what happens next to make sure that everyone's aware of the changes and.
There is a, there's a. There's a lot of communicating that we need to be doing. I'm working with um, Greg Warner right now. It's related with signs. We have a lot of information that we need to put out, base, push out based on. Um, changes. So, yeah, and the answer is yes, we need to do that. That doesn't preclude us from adopting the the changes, however.
I'm I've I've been that I'm comfortable.
We'll split somewhat. Laura, would you like to move the motion since you were the the main architect of this fantastic new article?
Sure.
The chapter?
Okay. Um, oh, it's probably probably beginning another day. Um. I don't know anymore. Okay, resolution twenty nine, twenty twenty three, um, adopting local law of um, oh five twenty three, amending chapter one thirty water. The following resolution was offered by me for adoption and seconded by. To wit. Whereas the Village of Cold Spring Board of Trustees is caused to be prepared to draft of the local law to amend chapter one thirty water of the village code. Whereas the Village of Cold Spring Board of Trustees held a duly notice public hearing. The draft local law beginning on August nine, twenty twenty three. Whereas the Village of Cold Spring Board of Trustees comply with the requirement of state environmental quality review act. As it applies to the adoption of the draft local law, now therefore be resolved that local law number zero five of twenty twenty three is hereby adopted. And the village clerk is authorized and directed to take all. Of the necessary actions to complete the local law adoption procedure, including filing that local law with New York State Office of the Secretariat.
Trustee Bozy.
Hi.
Trustee Fatty.
Hi.
Trustee Starbuck.
Hi.
Trustee Woods is absent, Mayor Foley.
Hi.
Knocked it on this date by a vote of four with one absent.
Now it's time to start. Calendar and getting a public hearing for the next chapters of um, vehicle and traffic and residential. Parking program. So I'm gonna open the calendar here. Jeff identified. Some um. Quorum concerns with people's travel. So today is the. Sixteenth, right? We do not currently have a meeting on the thirtieth because that is uh. The fifth Wednesday, and it's right before Memorial Day. We were hoping to leave that open. Twenty thirty is not enough time to have the um. Draft available. Yeah, so um, I think you were proposing the sixth, right?
Correct.
Which is the first. Wednesday, and that gives everybody time. Now, once, once we make a motion to set the public hearing, Jeff can make available the drafts.
I am gonna mention that Jack will.
Oh, is that the same day?
Yes.
It's at five o'clock.
Five o'clock. You know, which gives us two hours.
Potentially start seven thirty, a little late. Start at seven thirty so we know. Thank you for that reminder. Um, I'm I'm okay with that. Clark, are you okay with a later start?
We will do it after the board.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
All right.
Would you like to make a motion?
I would. I'd like to make a motion to uh, for resolution thirty one, twenty twenty three. Setting a date and time for a public hearing on proposed local laws, amending chapters one twenty six and one twenty seven of the village code. The following resolution is offered by myself for adoption and seconded by. To wit, whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Cold Spring seeks to update the village code. By amending chapter one twenty six residential parking program and chapter one twenty seven vehicle and traffic. And set a time and place for a public hearing to consider such amendments. Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved that the village board. Hereby determines that it will be the lead agency with respect to review of the proposed local law, the project in accord. With New York State and. Environmental Quality Review Act and part. Six seventeen of the regulations implementing SECR. Since there are no other agencies that have the authority to approve the project and let it be further resolved that the public hearing be held by the village board. In order to receive comments and suggestions regarding the proposed amendment in addition to the above. Listed chapters and to receive any comments concerning the potential adverse environmental impacts of the proposed legislation. In accord with SECR on Wednesday, September sixth, twenty twenty three at seven thirty P M. So amending this resolution to be seven thirty. Uh, at Village Hall eighty five Main Street, Cold Spring, New York, and it is further resolved that. The village clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause said public notice of said hearing to be given as provided by law on law roll call vote.
Or do roll call vote? I want to notice um. Note that there's an error. On the first, whereas chapter one twenty six is vehicle and track and traffic and one twenty seven is.
Right.
Oh, yes.
So those will need to be in the final documentation corrected.
That's that.
So.
Thank you.
With that amendment.
Um, who you moved it? You accept that modification? Do you have a second or accept the notification? Okay. Now roll call vote.
Trustee Bozy.
Hi.
Trustee Fatty.
Hi.
Trustee Starbuck.
Hi.
Trustee Woods is absent and Mayor Foley.
I say I, and I think actually, you know, there's something poignant about opening the public hearing on parking. Um, uh, the same day as Jack's memorial service. It was very much his conviction that we needed to get on with it and make it happen and make it work. So. Um, yeah. And he was the one who presented the plan.
Yeah.
Okay, um. Public comment? Any further, I don't know if we have any public last. Sledge removal. Oh, you know what? I printed this before the modification. I have my, I have the old agenda. Sorry. Thanks. Um, okay, so the the bids, the bid for sledge went out. Um, the the response that we got was lower than what we're paying now, so that's great. Um, and the um. Village engineer recommended that we accept the the low bid.
Do you know what about how much left?
Jeff would, probably.
It's, I don't off the top of my head, um. One of the things, our current supplier charges us a. Gas surplus fee that could range anywhere from nine percent to as high as twenty five, twenty six percent.
Yeah.
So it varies month by month.
And it doesn't have that.
Correct.
Right. So more stable um, agreement.
Yep.
This is that the village has done work with Fred Cook in the past.
And it gives, there's, you know, makes makes money available and water, and I'm sorry, and wastewater for other things.
Yeah, great.
Okay, um, so I'll offer this one. The following resolution was offered by Mayor Foley for adoption and seconded by.
Me?
Eliza Starbuck to wit. Whereas on July twenty fourth, twenty twenty three, the village issued a request for proposals for the removal. Transportation and disposal of approximately three hundred fifty thousand gallons of sledge. From the holding tank of the village sewer treatment plant and annual cleaning of three sewage pump station wet wells. And whereas two bids were received with Fred A. Cook Junior, Inc. submitting the lowest bid. And whereas James J. Han Engineering P C reviewed the two bids and made a recommendation to the board and trustees to accept the bid of Fred A. Cook Junior. Therefore, it is hereby resolved that the village awards the bid for the removal, transportation and disposal of approximately three hundred fifty thousand gallons of sledge. From the holding tank of the village sewer treatment plant and annual cleaning three sewage pump station wet wells. At a cost of sixty six thousand five hundred dollars based on a per unit cost of a hundred and ninety per one thousand gallons to Fred A. Cook. Junior, Inc. Roll call.
Trustee Bozy.
Hi.
Trustee Fatty.
Hi.
Trustee Starbuck.
Hi.
Trustee Woods is absent and Mayor Foley.
Hi.
Knocked it on this date by a vote of four yes, one of that.
Excellent. Um, I think the only cop public remaining is Michael. Anything from you? You're good? All right.
Um, I believe during, yes, um, just on calendar, my memory was that we weren't, that we won't be performing next week. I'm away.
Oh, yes. We have a quorum, but it's a bare quorum. Um, my recommendation would be to to cancel a meeting next week. There's nothing pressing right now. Um, and it gives everybody time to review parking and traffic and for us to move. Could be working on short-term rentals, which is the next up. Any objection to canceling on the twenty third?
Nope.
None from Jeff.
So our next meeting is on the thing.
Yes.
Yes. We will need to schedule a business meeting to approve bills.
Okay, that would be, that can be a daytime meeting.
It can be a daytime and it takes ten minutes.
We have the Friday.
The Friday thing? Oh, yes, I think that.
Executive session this Friday at eleven fifteen.
Actually, that's that's I, well, I could probably be there.
Okay, well, we, I think we have, we we're likely to have quorum, so if you can't make it, just connect Jeff.
All right.
And Jeff's gonna be noticing that as well. Okay, so I would make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Good night, Michael.